I'll call the meeting to order at 7:04. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Allred.
Here.
Mr. Andreessen. Mr. Fell.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Ms. McFarland.
Present.
Mr. Rose.
Here.
Ms. Sims. And Ms. Yu.
Here.
Okay, so it looks like we have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
All right. Approval of the minutes. We have no meeting minutes to approve that I know of. Communications. Are there any communications?
We did receive just a couple of communications regarding the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan, and those are printed out, and those are in front of all you commissioners.
All right. That brings us to continued public hearings. First, we have Plan Case Number 2500-T25, a request by the Urbana Zoning Administrator to amend regulations in Article 6 of the Urbana Zoning Ordinance allowing porches and porch stairs to encroach into a required yard. That case is continued to the April 17, 2025 regular meeting of the Plan Commission. Which brings us to Plan Case Number 2502, CP25, a request by the Urbana Zoning Administrator to adopt the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan. Just to explain how the hearing will proceed this evening, first, we'll have a presentation from staff that gives us some background and updates on changes that were requested or updates made from the last meeting. Then we'll, after that, then we'll have a chance for the Commission to ask staff any questions that they have, and after that, we'll open up the public input portion of the hearing where members of the public will be able to address the Commission about this case. Staff, turn it over to you.
The first item on the agenda stems from some comments we've heard recently about the amount of public input that was allowed or has taken place, and so we just wanted to get some facts out there about the different types of meetings that we've had since the first draft. So this is just the opportunities since the first draft. So you might remember that this started back in August when we had the first draft. We sent notifications to all households about some meetings that we were going to hold that they could talk about the plan, as well as view maps at that meeting, so that there were, I'll have a list of those meetings later. And then we sent it out. We sent an information release out like we would do on any, you know, large announcement from the city, sent to media, staff, the City Council, and Commissions, also our neighborhood contacts that we use, and stakeholders. So that was us publicizing it. We then had six meetings where the public could come to any meeting. We didn't call them ward-specific. We just made sure that we covered neighborhoods so that everybody would have an opportunity. So those meetings were held primarily in September. At least, the neighborhood meetings were all in September, and you can see the locations that we had. Then we also went to all of our Commissions, and we made presentations there, Kevin and I both did, as far as going over the plan, what the process had been, and giving them the QR code copies of the plan so that they could provide us feedback. And those took place also in September and then wrapped up in early October. So then I wanted to just outline the study sessions that we've had since the draft. So some of them, early on, were very specific. The first one was just kind of going, an overview, just bringing everybody up to speed again about how the Imagine Urbana process went, how the plans used, the structure of the document, and how to comment. The second one, we really then just looked at the draft as a whole and started to begin making comments, having discussion at the Plan Commission level. Then in the next meeting in late September, we focused on housing. You might remember we had Braden Belcher here to talk about housing specifically, and we went through that big move number one pretty much in detail there to get comment. In early October, we then focused on incremental development, infill, and annexation, also the big idea that Urbana is a city of connected neighborhoods, making walking a priority, and future land use descriptions. And we really carried that over then until the first meeting in November, that discussion about those main topics. Then, at the end of November, our focus was on land use descriptions. We've now since named them otherwise, but that was the term at the time. The next couple, next three meetings were just general, in just talking about the document itself, getting feedback, making recommendations to staff to make changes. Then, in February, the focus was on the updated place types and maps and updates to the online draft document. And then, later in February, we focused on the updated place types and maps, updates to the online draft, and then the path to plan adoption. And that was followed by the three hearings. This is the third of the three, starting with March 13. We continued to March 27, and now here we are at April 4. So this will be our 14th meeting of the Plan Commission where we've had discussion regarding the comprehensive plan. So just wanted to kind of just refresh everybody's memory, and especially the public that, you know, may or may not have been aware of every meeting that we've had. So now we'd like to just talk about the changes that we've had since the last meeting, and Kevin and I are going to tag-team on this. The very first item was brought to our attention by Dennis Roberts. He noticed that one of the pictures on the front cover, it's a picture of a banner, but in the background is a tiny picture of the courthouse, and it's an old picture of the courthouse. So we're going to make some changes with some of the cover pictures. So that has not happened. We're locating some pictures now that we think would be appropriate. What is a comprehensive plan? So I'll have Kevin step in on this one.
Yeah, so we had our city attorney, Matt Rushley, look over what we had in this section, and really, so the gist of it is that we, we're a home rule community, and we derive our power to enact a comprehensive plan based on our city code. So before, we were referring back to the Illinois state statutes. Matt recommended that we change it to just point directly to our city code. So there's a lot of text here on the page, but this is, this is what we sort of put together based on his input and his editing.
And he essentially said that the municipal code doesn't hold here because the Urbana city code really supersedes that, and so the Plan Commission is really directed by the city code versus the municipal code.
When you say municipal code, you mean the state combined, whatever they...
Yeah, combined state statutes.
By stat, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you go back to that for a second?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if people wanted to actually read it or dig into it.
And you have copies of that in front of you, too, if you can't read it on the screens.
There might be some questions about this, so we might as well tackle it before we move on to the next thing.
Okay.
And I can start since I have a question. So the line, the line where it says a comprehensive plan is purely advisory in nature, I just want to see if that is the best way to state that. In the sense that there are, there is also language elsewhere in our ordinance in regards to the approval of certain things. I'm thinking maybe like special use or conditional use that might refer explicitly to needing to be consistent or supported, or I don't know what the language is, but it refers to the comprehensive plan. So it's advisory on some things, but in other things, it's, there's more, it's more than advisory, right?
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if that's, because I don't want there to be the sense that, and this is more maybe discussion for later, but I don't want there to be the sense amongst, you know, council or others that would look at the comprehensive plan and just say, oh, well, this is just advisory. We don't have to follow it. And maybe that applies to some things, but I think what we've been saying all along is that in terms of how Plan Commission and staff use it to make decisions around land use policy, it's more than advisory.
I'll make the point now, but I guess it's a discussion item really deleting that sentence and relying on the next sentence, perhaps with a slight edit on that last sentence, I think accomplishes the purpose.
So just saying something like a comprehensive plan is the policy basis for regulatory
Striking that entirely, yeah.
Yes, and just strike the preceding sentence.
Okay.
My reaction is, is that accomplish what your purpose?
Yeah, I think it does.
I think so, too.
I agree. I agree. I think that accomplishes what was my concern here.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't have, I mean, this is, yeah, fine, we don't have to settle this now. We can talk more about it in discussion. I just was more a question of clarification about whether or not this, because I didn't look at the special use criteria or the conditional use criteria, but I'm pretty sure it's in there that it refers to.
I think it's appropriate to talk about it as we go. I mean, if that's okay. It's up to the Commission.
These are simple things that we can identify, and we can adopt them as it were later because we can't actually act at this point.
Okay. Any other questions for staff on this item?
The next one was just a simple fix. We wanted to make sure the Venn diagram was changed based on our discussion, and the Venn diagram disappeared on here. I'm sorry.
No, I deleted that because I had updated it. It was a different version.
But I'd already done it by hand on this one. It was okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, so what we did, and I'm sorry, we need to bring that up probably on the screen, what we did was take the other city plans, and we just butted it up against the circle that had the comprehensive plan.
I can just pop over.
Yeah, if you can. So rather than having them overlap, it's now just touching. And then left the small area plans alone and left the other city plans alone. And then we did put the full name of the plan in the Venn diagram, Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan.
Yeah, so here's the updated, will this give me a bigger one? Not really. Okay. Oh, never mind.
And that has been updated online, just to clarify.
Yeah.
Does that reflect what our discussion was last week?
Yes, about the diagram, but I'm seeing other stuff I'm reading in front of me. We're going to have to come back to discuss this.
Okay.
So showing them that they're independent of Imagine Urbana. That was the discussion.
I agree, but the language that we talked about last week for how the plans relate to the comprehensive plan, I gather, has not been incorporated, and therefore the Venn diagram.
Okay.
Anyway.
That's in a different section where we refer to the plans, so that's coming up.
I realize, but I'm reading the ordinance proposed, and the Venn diagram then becomes something else, so I'm just raising this that we got to come back to it.
Depends where we end up going with the motion and the recommendation, but that might need to be revised to reflect that.
Correct. Okay. Then we, discussion was about the use of the full name of Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan, and our solution for that, we went back and looked. It's been called Imagine Urbana since the beginning, and also in the document itself, the mayor starts off saying, we're calling it Imagine Urbana. But to clarify, to make it clear, because I think it needs to be clearer, what we decided to do is every section, we'll spell it out, that it's the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan, and then in that same section, we'll refer to it then going forward as Imagine Urbana. But the next section that comes along will do the same so that it's clear. And like I said, the Venn diagram, it wasn't spelled out there, so I think we're going to just make sure that it is clear, if that's acceptable.
Okay, and then for the next, for the next one, there were some suggestions to make changes to the Connected City map, so I might just pop over there so we can go through those. So the first one was just a typo. It said "of" instead of "or." So we fixed that. And then as soon as this loads, I can get into the other changes.
You might want to look at your hard copy while he's looking at the live map.
Okay, there we go. All right, so I think I might want to look at that. Okay. So a couple of things we talked about last time. First was just a stylistic change we didn't talk about, but I realized earlier today, I had another question unrelated to the comprehensive plan, but I had realized that you couldn't tell what the underlying road or street classification was if you had a project overlaying it. So before the, like, number 10 here used to be a solid blue line, so you wouldn't be able to see the functional classification underneath. So I just updated that. So now all the projects, with some rare exceptions like this arrow pointing here, doesn't need to be a dashed line because it's not, because it's not on a corridor. It's pointing out an area. So that was just a stylistic thing. Now, another thing I added, which we talked about a bit, we were talking about University Avenue last time. I also included Cunningham Avenue between University and 74 because that section is pretty bad to, I see people jaywalking across there in some spots that look pretty dangerous very frequently. So I added this number seven that says explore options to improve safety for people walking and biking along and across University and Cunningham Avenues. And then for those, I identified a pretty large swath of basically all of University Avenue from west over to High Cross Road, because there's issues all along that. And then Cunningham Avenue, as I said, up to I-74 from University Avenue. So we can get into that in discussion if need be, but that was a significant change based on our discussion last time. Let's see. Okay, here we go. For number five, I went to our capital improvements plan to see exactly what that said for the Florida Avenue project. So essentially, it says to rehabilitate the pavement, add the shared use path that we already have funding for, which is kind of a separate project, but it was part of the main project, adding traffic signals and bus stops along the way. And that's between, essentially between Wright Street and Vine. It goes slightly east of Vine, but that is shown here. And actually, I should extend that to where it actually extends to because it's, it goes another street east of Vine. So I'll make a note of that.
And I think... Chinshi pointed this out to me. Lucky number seven shows up twice.
It shows up four times.
No, no, on the list. Go down to the legend.
Oh, down here?
Yeah.
Well, yes, yes, it does now. That's because we only stopped at six before, so I'll have to update that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good eye.
All right, it would be easier to just make it 6.5 or something.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so that's all for the Connected City map here.
You, um... Make sure in number eight, nine, and 10 that you've got the right number seven.
Yes, yeah, because now they'll be...
You haven't corrected the typo in nine and 10.
Is there one in there?
Completion. This was on my list from last week.
Oh, competition.
I mean, it may be a new technique that I don't know about, but...
Trust between competition and completion.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's like cooperating to compete or something.
There's our proofreader again. Thank you. I'm surprised that wasn't caught because it's not a word. Well, I guess it is.
Humans can still do things.
Okay, and then for the, for the place types map, which I'll go to now, which will also take a minute to download. So most of these were just, there was no, no sort of changes to the, to the place types themselves. It was just enlarging some fonts, enlarging the legends just to make it easier to read. I played around a little bit with changing the annotation, or enlarging the annotation font, like the main, for main annotations, and making that a little bit easier to read so we can kind of just look at that. So yeah, larger legend. Sorry, the maps, I haven't printed out updated maps, so the ones on the walls are from last time. So yeah, not, not much that you can really see here since it's on the screen, but I did enlarge, yeah, I did enlarge some things. Tried to space, space some text out so it was easier to read.
That was a good suggestion by Mr. Rose last week about, yeah, between wayfinding and the annotations.
And then...
Can you zoom out, like, just one?
So I...
One increment?
I think since this is an edge, well, maybe I can, oh, yeah, I can do that, like that. Maybe.
Is that what you want to see? You want to see the legend?
Yeah, I want to see like a quarter of the map so I can see what, how things read that way.
Well, this is at 50%.
It's about like the separated maps in the 2005 plan at this scope and readability.
The colors remain the same here, but now they're larger. Does that help differentiate the colors in the legends and place types?
Yes.
Oh, and I did update the text size for the place type text, so like this RR right here is, I think, twice as large as it used to be.
I think part of the problem of matching the colors is that the colors on the map are, have a transparency, and the colors in the legend don't have a transparency. That throws it off a little bit, so maybe make the legend colors transparent to the, to match the map.
Yeah.
The problem with that is where the legends are, there isn't much. Corn doesn't come out the same color as houses.
Yeah.
So you're going to end up with another different color anyway.
I could play around with it and see if I could, see if I could come up with something that, that works pretty decently.
The other thing you might be able to do is fade the background a bit.
Yeah, I've got, it's...
I mean, it's faded some extent, I realize, but playing with both directions
Yeah.
might be worth trying. I agree with the problem, though.
And then the neighborhood building form. Remember, we were looking at language to take out the word monotonous, and like your feedback on that.
Yeah, so in, I'll go back over to the...
Kevin, may I add that one other possibility would be in the legend to capture a rectangle from somewhere in the map itself.
Yeah, yeah, I could play around with that, too. What I, if you're, if you want to get kind of nerding out on this, what I use for the, for the overlays, it's not just a transparency, it's a treatment called multiply, which I find is like a really good way to overlay colors on top of aerial photos because then it doesn't kind of wash them out, because just general transparency will, will kind of wash things out. And I don't know what multiply does, but it makes it, it still makes the underlying aerials pop through. So for all you, all you planning students at home or amateur mappers.
Actually, they're in the audience tonight.
Yeah, we do, we do have two, actually.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the most useful ones.
Since you've gotten, since we've gotten this far into it, another possibility, if multiply, if the technique you're using in this app, where you're using, would be to intensify the colors.
Yeah.
I don't know what, I don't know what control you have with the color palette, but the colors are pretty faded as well. And if the colors became more intense, without eliminating the transparency, that they would be easier to distinguish. Anyway, we probably shouldn't spend the whole evening on this.
Right now, it appears very muted, I think.
I think, yeah, well, I think the risk with that is that they then start to look like zoning colors, and we don't want this to look like a zoning map, so just find that perfect balance.
I will, yeah.
I always tell Kevin to work his magic, so...
Okay, yeah, so as Andrew was saying, she highlighted a couple of minor changes to the corridor neighborhood description. So before, we were saying usually, or, yeah, yeah, it said...
Typically, typically three to five.
Three to five stories, so we scaled that back to three to four. And then instead of monotonous, using the word unvarying, which I think captures the, captures things better than saying monotonous.
And varying is not as subjective, maybe, as the word monotonous.
I also suggested boring, and then we threw that out because that's very subjective, I guess.
But when you do synonyms, that comes up first for monotonous is boring.
Excuse me, is this the, the change made in response to the question about horizontal and interruption?
Yes. Yeah. And then, another change we made was that, yeah, was that one about solitary buildings on single lots being discouraged because that didn't make much sense, so.
Deleted that sentence.
And then on here, I'm just going to go over to, go back to the plan to talk about this one because, so a little more, whoa, that's really zoomed out. It was a little, a little more nuanced than what we initially thought I was going to do for that. So for the place and development type matrix, so per Dustin's suggestion, so I just combined triplex and fourplex. Because, well, first of all, I couldn't find a triplex in Urbana. This is the only sort of, I'd say, classical fourplex that I knew of. So the triplex I had pulled was from Chicago, and it didn't really look like anything else in Urbana, so I just kind of pulled that out. Also, the way we had set them up in the matrix was they had the same exact sort of color scheme for the areas where they, you know, you know, where they should be allowed or might be appropriate in some cases, so the green and the yellow. Then something else I did was I sort of rounded the apartment buildings a little bit more. So instead of, I think it was five to 13 units before, so I just rounded it to five to 10 units. And then we do have sort of some apartment buildings that have more units, and I, I think philosophically, I'm not sure if I'm totally sold on going with units because I think we're, I'm more concerned with form and mass of the buildings and things. But if we're going, if we're going to sort of identify them by unit numbers, we can do this. But of course, you could have an 11 to 20 unit building that's twice as tall as this and just doesn't take up as much space on the ground. But I did find, you know, find this one, I think there's 14 units in this. This is part of Gather, the part that was done by Wright. And then I did keep sort of the larger apartment buildings. And then I did keep sort of the larger apartment building, but what I did was, I scaled way back, so, you know, something that looks like this large apartment building would really only be appropriate downtown, or sort of in the university neighborhood type area. I could foresee something like that working in some cases in a commercial area, but I'm not, I'm not totally sure. But just thinking about how we have many commercial areas that have a lot of parking lots, and, you know, those could be areas that would make sense to put some housing in to sort of help turn them more into complete areas than they are right now.
So I'm sort of trying to make a list of things to deal with during discussion, but we're going to have to come back to all this. So your notion that we should be using form instead of units, I think, is correct, and I think we should change this. It may not mean changing the pictures as much as changing the description of why, of what they represent.
Yeah.
You're referring to units, is that what you're saying?
In, in the development world, they're categorized by bedrooms, which is a way more definitive description of what's in the building, rather than units, right?
Right.
A one-bedroom unit is the same unit as a four-bedroom unit.
This is discussion, but I think that's an even better reason to not use units or bedrooms as the distinction in the plan. May use it in the zoning ordinance, but this is not the zoning ordinance.
Can I ask more of like a philosophical question? So how do you imagine, yeah, how do you imagine this being used? Like, what is, what is the purpose of the development type, place type matrix?
Yeah, so I imagine this being used not, not as an absolute thing that we use, but as something that gives us, that helps guide us when we rewrite our zoning ordinance, so that we can look to this and we can say, you know, in, in certain areas, in certain zones, and I think as we've talked about before, so there could be sort of multiple zones we come up with that fit under these, you know, like the N1 or N2 or whatever place types. So these just give sort of an overall framework to the types of development that might be appropriate when we rewrite the zoning ordinance, you know, in various zones. Because we do have, you know, we have many different sort of physical forms for our existing neighborhoods, but the place types map kind of just identifies them in broader strokes as, say, a neighborhood one or a neighborhood two, or, or the like.
Can I wait, can I wait just a little bit on that idea before we move on? As, I'm asked to use the comprehensive plan occasionally, and typically, the way I'm asked to use it is by developers who are from out of state, who will, who will look at our zoning ordinance first, and then they will look at the comprehensive plan and see where the comprehensive plan says they can nudge the city to increase the density of what they do to, to skirt the system, right? That's, that's how the comprehensive, in these times of buildings are, in my profession are, is most often used, right? It's a vehicle to, to push the city to give them a zoning variance.
So that kind of gets to what I am really wondering, which is, so we've kind of approached this, I mean, we had, when we originally started this, we had a mix of images of stuff that actually existed in the city, as well as maybe examples that didn't exist, but from other places. And so I'm, I'm just kind of wondering if this is, and this can be for discussion, too, but is this really just meant to reflect what we have, or is it meant to also show, you know, illustrative examples of what we would like when we don't have these things, which is kind of what I'm hearing from Mr. Fell in terms of, so you described how you imagined using it, and I was thinking there are other potential users in the development community who might, although I'm told they never look at the comprehensive plan, but then we just heard that maybe they do actually look at the comprehensive plan. So like the, like the triplex, we could have found, you know, a picture of a triplex that's, you know, something that someone would build today, right?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, we have that picture of the fourplex, and I don't want to say anything bad about whoever owns that fourplex, but I imagine there could be more sort of exciting example pictures of fourplexes that someone might actually build, that would be something that we would like to see happen, as opposed to just reflecting back what we have. And I think that might be something that applies to some of the other categories, too, but we can save that for discussion.
Yeah, and I'm happy to discuss that later, but in general, I was trying to find local examples that looked good to me. So, you know, because you could have a really, say, nondescript, hideous-looking apartment building, and you don't want to put that here, because then people will envision that going up in their neighborhood. So, you know, it's, it's trying to be illustrative, but it's trying to use local examples.
Yeah, and I think it generally works, except the fourplex and maybe some of the commercial examples, but we can come back to this in discussion, maybe.
Yeah, okay.
I think that covers actual changes we made. We gave a couple of other handouts that you have in front of you, and we can save that for our discussion, but the other document, the one that has legal counsel review, there were three questions. Those were questions that were posed at the last meeting to really address the scope of the plan commission, or, excuse me, the, the comprehensive plan. And so our legal counsel came up with these responses, so that's something that we can, we can talk about. And then we have a draft of an ordinance, and again, this would be something that the city council would actually adopt, but there was discussion about having a description, whether we put it in the plan, or we save it for the ordinance that the city council approves, and that's what you see in red in that document, so we can discuss that as well.
Okay, well, can, can you tell us kind of, so usually, you know, at this point, you would also make your recommendation about what we do.
Right.
And kind of, we have kind of two options, in terms of how we treat the, the other plans that were adopted as amendments, and we had Lou's proposal from the last meeting, and then now it sounds like we have this other option for, from the city attorney. So I think it would be good for you guys to maybe sort of summarize what those options are for us before we go into discussion, if you could.
So the options for how to deal with
The, what we do with the, the existing other plans, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I do think, so we, we talked with our city attorney this morning, just sort of about those options, and so, yeah, it's still, it's still not totally, you know, coalesced, or whatever, in, in my head, because I think there's, I think there's benefits to approaching it in, in multiple ways, but I think sort of the intent is that we, we have existing plans that we put a lot of time and effort into, that exist as part of our current plan, the 2005 plan. And we don't want to lose, we don't want to lose the good parts of those plans, we want to be able to carry them forward and still have them have some authority going forward. But I think as Lou pointed out last time, or maybe the time before, I can't, can't remember, it's all merging together, is that, I think I just lost my train of thought. Oh, so since, as part of this comprehensive plan, we didn't actually go back and review every one of those plans and say, you know, these are the pieces we think lines up with the current plan that we're working on, or these are the parts we want to carry forward. Just outright adopting, adopting them as part of this plan, just wholesale, doesn't make a lot of sense, and I think that was Lou's point before. But also, we don't want to lose the good parts. So what, you know, what came out of our discussion with the city attorney is that we could add somewhere, we, we put it in sort of a draft ordinance that would adopt the Imagine Urbana comprehensive plan. We refer to those, and his suggestion was to just say that, the extent to which those other plans align with this plan, to the extent that they align with this plan, we will incorporate them as components of Imagine Urbana. So that's one option. I think another option still would be to do what Lou suggested, which was to sort of come up with something, which I think would also go in the adopting ordinance, that somehow says that we adopt those as standalone plans, and gives them some level of authority. But I think, in any case, we want to make sure that the new comprehensive plan is sort of the, the uber plan, or that, you know, the plan that has the ultimate authority going forward. So I don't know if I did a great job of explaining all that, but.
No, I think that's, that's fine, but is it, is it your position, or is it staff's position, or the city attorney's position, that adopting these plans as standalone plans in the process of adopting the comprehensive plan, the way Lou described it last time, that that would somehow lessen those plans, or that would be, that they would be unempowered or something like that? Is that the concern, or?
I'm, I'm not totally sure. I got that that might be, that, that's sort of the impression that, that I got from our Because if we, you know, if we do adopt those as sort of standalone plans, then what authority do they have, without being sort of attached to, to the comprehensive plan?
Well, and the comment legal counsel also made was that these plans, everything interconnects, you know, the, the plans, you know, they should be getting guidance from the comp plan when they're drafted, you know, they should be looking at, does this plan that they're drafting, whether it's bicycle and pedestrian, or, you know, whatever else, that they're looking at the comp plan and incorporating, or using that as their guide, their guide to actually draft that individual plan. We then talked about looking forward, the comp plan talks about in one of the little moves to, that we will be updating the climate action plan. We also talk about small area plans, and so those are the things that, you know, we were thinking about, you know, do we want to have those addressed, or be prepared to have those addressed, whatever the language is, though, how we're, how we're looking at those plans that haven't, haven't even been drafted yet.
Okay, I mean, I think we can save most of this for discussion, unless there are other, I just, these are clarifying questions that I had, but is there any other questions?
Lots of discussion about that, which I'm working on, but I'll save it.
Okay, was there anything else?
No, I don't think so. I mean, we just, on the screen, we give you some recommendations, and, but we can, we can get to that later, and then we have sort of an updated timeline on here, so, you know, we are at April 3rd, say, the, I believe we're just targeting the 21st for it to go to committee of the whole.
The next committee of the whole is the 7th, and we are too late to make that meeting, just because of their deadline was today, to give packets out, and we don't have a decision, you know, yet, of course, for recommendations, so.
All right, any last questions for staff? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
So at this point, we'll move into the public input portion of the hearing. If anyone would like to address the commission, you can come forward and state your name and sign in and tell us what you have to say. You've been abandoned, so you're on the spot now. Luckily, there's no camera on you.
Sorry, it's too late, I already put that out there.
All right, seeing that there are no takers, and no one else wants to address the commission, we'll declare public input closed, and now go into discussion amongst the commission, and possibly entertain a motion to vote. So who wants to lead us off with discussion? Mr. Rose?
Perhaps, I'd like to introduce this item that we were most recently speaking about, about what do we do about other plans made by the city? And as I see it, there are completed plans that may have no further work being done on them, so they are essentially standalone, and I would think they may stay that way. There are active plans, I think, which have support, and and it seems to me that the, the, those involved with that plan may seek incorporation into the comprehensive plan as an amendment, and then that could move forward to us. So I distinguish between completed plans and active plans, and am open at this point to a process by which an active plan could be incorporated as an amendment.
Right, active plans and future plans, I think there's, there's clear precedence in, in, well, certainly in state legislation, and I imagine, I haven't looked at the, the city ordinance, but maybe the city ordinance describes this, describes this as well, but I don't think that's what we need to figure out. It's more to do with the existing plans that were adopted as part of the 2005 comprehensive plan over the years since 2005.
I'm not sure what that conversation was about.
I was essentially saying that, that completed, that, that completed, dated, done plans are standalone plans, and that with this version of the comprehensive plan, we do not automatically or without review incorporate those previous plans, but remain open to future and, to active plans and future, to make sure that
What is an active plan?
In progress, is that what you mean?
Yes, in prog, or one
I don't know what that, I don't know what distinction you're making, I guess, is my problem.
Mr. Rose, were you referring to ones that we actively look at? You know, they're not on the shelf, they're, they're being utilized for guidance, or?
I retract my comment, because I cannot support it with examples.
Well, I, I think part of, the first part of your comment about what to do with the plans that you're calling the completed plans, which are the plans that were, that have been adopted as amendments to the previous comprehensive plan, I think that's really the crux of what we need to figure out. And the issue is that those plans were never adopted by ordinance as standalone plans, so they're currently not standalone plans, and that's why there was the proposal to address that in the ordinance that adopts the current plan, where those would be adopted as standalone plans at the same time, as one option. And then the other option that we have in the draft ordinance that we were given before the meeting today, is to adopt them with the current comprehensive plan, but with some language that is a little messy to me, and only adopts them to the extent that they align with the current plan.
I think, I think what they, what, I want to speak for the city attorney, I think what he, the language he's driving at is when there's a conflict between the comprehensive what he, the language he's driving at is when there's a conflict between the comprehensive plan and some other plan, the comprehensive plan takes precedence. I may be incorrect, but my other comment about this is, are, and this is kind of a little bit of a staff question, because I don't know, do any of these other plans get amended? So if we, as a, a small bit of language, if we adopt the ordinance as it's written, if we amend any of these plans, the amendments to those plans are not included in the comprehensive plan. And I think if we're gonna go to the step where we want to adopt any of these other plans into the comprehensive plan, we are probably going to amend them to get them to more align with the comprehensive plan before we do that. So I would suggest if we leave that in, we add the language somewhere that says these plans as passed or amended.
Okay. So, because I've worked on this last time, and have worked at this idea for a long time, the language I suggested last week as option two, which got general support over option one, I think what we could do is, and I guess I haven't actually put the carrot in to say where this goes in my language, but insert with the same policy basis as the comprehensive plan. Okay? So essentially, adopt them as individual plans as of the date of their adoption of amendments, which gets around the precedence question by age of the plan, all right? Because we haven't reviewed them, we haven't looked at them. They may already have been modified, but, but they don't get amended, because they can't be amended as plans, because their amendments to the comprehensive plan is the way they were adopted. So if they got amended, amended, they would be amended in the comprehensive plan. So that's not, that's not going to be an issue, given the way they're currently adopted. So I think the, what, the only, from the, well, let me then back up. To me, this, whereas legal language is a, is a, is not just messy, it's a can of worms. I mean, it essentially says, okay, look at these plans and decide, are they consistent with the vision and values of Imagine Urbana? Who's gonna do this? How can anybody interpret them? We also, we're not posting them on ENCODE, or we don't know yet. If they're gonna be incorporated, they have to be in there, they have to be available as part of the comprehensive plan. You know, maybe they're appendices, or they're amendments. We do not want to do that. I, I just, it's definitely not what we want to do. So I would strongly urge us to do some editing of our option two, to make clear that they are being saved, essentially, based on their previous date of adoption, because we haven't done anything to them, we haven't reviewed them, we haven't looked at them, we don't have any idea. But by saying they're adopted as of their previous date as amendments, then we're saying, though, you know, whatever we knew before, whatever we said before is still true. But then we can insert this, that they have, since we now have this nice language at the end of that paragraph that did get created, which I think is actually a really good sentence, we can essentially put that into this adoption language. And, and the other thing that, that didn't get mentioned is, we have to take some of the language that was in the current draft out, because some of it is truly problematic.
The language about what?
Well, I mean, I don't know what constitutes the current draft. I couldn't get to anything new through the meeting packet. I just got an error on the line, and so I went back to get what is presumably the current, or what I presumed to be the current version by going back to the document on the website from the planning division, but that was the document not changed by the things we heard today.
What document weren't you able to find?
The plan.
I mean, it's still there.
When I, okay, the, the meeting announcement that we get sends us to get the packet by going to the meeting list. If I clicked on the packet icon in the meeting list, I got an error, 404 error, I couldn't get there. So I went to the city site, went to the plan division, went to the comprehensive plan, went to the Imagine Urbana instead of the 2005, and I clicked on that, and I got something. But it was, you know-
And you were looking for the 2005 plan, or the current plan?
No, no, I was looking for, I was imagining that there would be an updated version, or something like you just handed out to us, that would be the meeting, in the meeting packet, like we usually get.
Well, the last few meetings, what we've done is, we've made changes up until this meeting, and then provided you with those changes at the meeting.
Right.
We have not included them in the packet.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, I don't know what the current version looks like.
We have not made any changes to the current version. We're waiting on decisions from this meeting.
Okay. But you did not include in this, the deletion, in this list of changes, the deletion of stuff about these other plans. So, so what I'm trying to talk about is, we're talking about what language we want, but we have to look at the whole section, because there are deletions we have to make, as well as additions.
Can we just bring that up? Can I ask, well, that's coming up, so, it's, the, the city, it's possible for the city to adopt other plans beside the comprehensive plan? Just theoretically, I suppose?
Yes, theoretically.
And is it strange, or is it something that has been done?
I mean, the whole time I've been here, we've been working with the current comprehensive plan, and basically every plan that, that I can recall, that has ever been sort of adopted by council, has gone through plan commission as a comprehensive plan amendment.
That would not be true of the action, council, mayor, action plan, for example.
Right, but we don't-
I, I hope they adopt it, or they somehow say that-
Are you talking about their strategic goals for the, for a couple of years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is nothing to, I, I don't think, unless we're gonna go to the city code, and I don't have it with me, that there's anything that prevents the city from adopting plans And the other thing is, what, the, the option is still open, and this may get back to something Bill was trying to get at, that if a new bikeways plan is created by the bikeways commission, primarily, if the city wants to adopt it as amendment to Imagine Urbana comprehensive plan, they could do that. But incorporating a whatever, you know, five to 10-year-old, actually, well, yeah, the one in here is 16 years old, 17 years old, as an amendment, or as a component, just makes no sense to me.
The, it takes work to, to, to fit other plans with the comprehensive plan, and I guess my aim was to say the burden of that work should be on others. They, it's their responsibility to, to achieve that consistency, that it would be sufficient to, to have it be an amendment.
Well, I think we, we could look at all of these plans and make a decision about adopting them, but I think that would be inconsistent with the timeline that we're trying to accomplish this in. And, so we're trying to find a sort of workaround, or a solution, that everyone is comfortable with, that keeps us on the schedule-
Right.
-as much as possible.
And I think, legal counsel, that's why they came up with the language that they did, was, you know, as they align with Imagine Urbana, so that, I think, to Mr. Fell's point, that the comp plan would trump anything that an individual plan would have.
So-
I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay.
Right. I admit that I am a heretic on this, but it is a major part of my scholarly work for the last 20 years, which essentially argues that if you force plans to be consistent, and pretend that they are all up to date, and rely on each other hierarchically, you are fooling yourself and misleading the readers and users of these plans, because it will not be true empirically. And so we would be wiser to recognize that, and realize that not only might the bikeways plan show more, higher aspirations, and more focus, and less deference to other issues that the city deals with, and that that's fine, because that's part of its purpose, is to set those aspirations. And to say that, you know, okay, it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan, because it pushes biking too much over driving, you know, this doesn't accomplish the work that these groups are trying to do.
So Kevin, in our discussion with legal counsel, I mean, we had Mr. Hopkins' language about the option two. I don't know that he was essentially opposed to that language. Did you feel that way?
No, I didn't, I didn't feel that way.
Yeah. So, I mean, if we want to revert back, and that's the decision of the plan commission, we can certainly do that.
Well, it would be more of our recommendation, but, you had something, Miss you?
Yeah. So I've been in this plan commission for a few years now, and I don't recall us as a plan commission adopting some of those plans listed as 2020. Did we adopt those plans? Pedestrian master plan, bicycling, wayfinder plan, did it go through this commission?
I, I believe-
Kevin probably would have the answer.
They did. Yeah, these were all comprehensive plan amendments. I mean, 2020 might be a little fuzzy in all of our minds right now, so I, I don't, I honestly don't remember if we were, if those were virtually adopted plans, or something.
They, most of these plans, when they came as amendments, and I might have argued against it then, too, were, were presented as things that were already done by somebody else. They weren't, we did not really deliberate about them much, maybe if at all, as a plan commission, which is another part of the point.
Yeah, I think the only, the only one on here, and that was before my time, but the only one on here that I'd say went through a, a process that was driven in part by plan commission, would have been the Crystal Lake Neighborhood Plan from 2008. But I think there was a steering committee that kind of ran that one as well, so.
So, yeah, to my, the, the question I asked earlier, like, is there, is there precedent for the city adopting plans that are not as amendments to the comprehensive plan? What about the climate action plan? Because I don't think that is an amendment to the comprehensive plan.
I, I don't think it was, it's not listed here.
Okay. So it's, so I, I just want to, like, prove the point that it's-
Yeah.
-possible, and it's not something that's going to result in these plans not being taken seriously, or creating some other kind of-
Right, yeah. Yeah, if we adopted some plan, and it's not an amendment to the plan, we're not just gonna then, you know, shelve it, and say, you know, job well done.
So, does, does anyone have any, it seems like we're mostly leaning toward what we're calling Lou's option two. Does anyone have any major issues with moving in that direction as a way to resolve this?
Do we have words to that effect? I'm working on them in real time.
And I have those, Lou. I mean, that's what I presented to the attorney, I just don't have it here with me.
What, what I'm working on is a revision to those words, I've got them in front of me.
Okay.
But I want to, okay, so what we have on the screen, I want to start from what we have on the screen, because this is basically a response to that.
And we deleted, we deleted some of this-
Yeah, well, but that's what I'm trying to say, because you didn't report deleting it. So we need, we have to delete the automatically, that sentence has to go. Okay? Because automatic, I mean, does this mean that ChatGPT does it and reports to us that it's changed it? I don't know what it means.
The last sentence is on that.
Right, yeah, I was just looking, looking for it.
That has to be deleted, okay?
And the other sentence that we had agreed on to delete was the whole sentence on retreated Urbana, taking that completely out.
Okay.
So that was one thing we agreed to.
That's what I was thinking, so, okay, so, so-
So that whole sentence is gone.
I'm trying to get to it, I saw it a minute ago.
It's the last sentence in the paragraph that begins with although.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so we get rid of, so-
Then we also took out the adopt for that, and measurement adopts the following elements. I know we didn't agree with the word elements, and-
Yeah, okay. So, so, in the, in the bigger paragraph that's first, we, we have deleted retreat at Urbana. I mean, we, if we're gonna act on this as a recommendation, we have to know what we're acting on.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Absolutely.
Can we copy and paste this section into a Word document?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could just log into ENCODE Plus and just do it in real time as well.
Let's do that.
But, well, okay, I don't know what your rules are for ENCODE Plus, and what constitutes a version.
I mean, it's all version-controlled and everything, so.
It keeps every draft, and-
In any case, then the question is, after you correct that bigger paragraph, what comes after it? And replaces all of the rest of it?
We, we could just copy it into Word, and just-
Do it that way, because I can't get to the maintenance version on this computer.
Since we're also sort of up against this question, could these plans identified as individual plans, adopted in the language we're working on, be loaded into ENCODE Plus?
Sorry, say that again?
Yes. Yes.
If we do what I am trying to propose, and these are adopted as individual plans with the same policy force of a comprehensive plan, can they be loaded into in Code Plus?
They, yeah, I mean, we could load them in like very basically as sort of just a PDF attachment. We could also, I'm sure we could figure out a way to sort of just copy and paste everything in. But that might be a formatting issue and all that. But there's, yeah, there would be ways to.
Yeah, absolutely. Right now, right now, there are links and there are links from the city's website. In Code Plus links to the city's website with that version.
But I, I think now that we have, now that we've been able to upload maps and such, because we weren't able to do that for a while, I, I think we can upload. I'm not, I'm not sure if we have a limit on gigabytes or whatever, but I think we could.
I think we can figure out a way.
All I'm trying to say is if they are included as elements, then they got to be there.
Right.
And if we're going to adopt them as individual plans, they ought also to be there because we're claiming they are plans to be reckoned with at least discounted by their age relative to Imagine Urbana comprehensive plan. Okay. So that goes away. So instead of the, the statement, Imagine Urbana adopts, what the language is what we talked about last week was the following plans, comma, which were adopted as amendments to the 2005 comprehensive plan, are hereby adopted as individual plans as of the date of their adoption. Oh, I, I've. So I gotta back up because my, it's one of my typically too long sentences. Are hereby adopted as individual plans as of, as of the date of their adoption as amendments to the 2005 comprehensive plan. That's what I said before.
Okay.
But that's a lousy sentence.
Can I have you start that sentence from the beginning and I'll type it as we.
Well, you don't have it in front of you. I'll just give it to you.
I don't.
Are the dates given for these plans, the dates of their adoption into the, so their, their adoption was adoption into the comprehensive plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct, as an amendment.
And then did you want to add?
Yeah, well, so. They. I, I guess I'd ask other people to read that sentence. I don't like the sentence structure. But if it means, if it, if it works, I haven't come up with a better way to state it at the moment. I can't improve on that because I, I see what we're trying to do, and that is they have a, a different standing now. They are individual plans. And, and I'm very comfortable with that because I have a sense of what that means. So I, I think I come up with, maybe if it says are hereby adopted as individual plans with the date of their adoption.
What was that?
Uh-uh.
Here we go.
In other words, what I'm trying to make clear is.
You're trying to postdate the adoption.
Right. I'm trying to postdate the adoption. And I think with maybe is a little better, but we can, you know, sit with it for a while and see if it makes any difference. The, the other piece is whether we want to give them policy basis and whether we want to state that that policy basis is equivalent to or not to the comprehensive plan.
Well, I don't know, wouldn't the appropriate place for that to be, for that to happen would be in the.
Ordinance?
In the ordinance, yeah.
I like that.
And, and also, Lou, before you leave, should we say here, because I don't know that it's clear, we're talking about are hereby adopted by the Imagine Urbana comprehensive plan? Isn't that what we're saying?
The city.
No, by the city. So we should maybe say that.
Yes, something, whoever the.
Well, now, now wait a minute. So once we do that, then that belongs in the ordinance, not in the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
I kind of think this mostly belongs in the ordinance.
Okay.
Yes.
So, but I like what you've brought up because, you know, passive voice is typically vague.
Maybe this, maybe in this paragraph, we just explain what the ordinance will do. And we say something like, there were these plans that were adopted as amendments. Going forward, these plans will be adopted as standalone plans by the ordinance that adopts this comprehensive plan or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Listen to the recording on that one.
Well, I was, I was kind of thinking something similar, just being, yeah, more straightforward, just saying the following plans were adopted as amendments to, to the 2005 plan. Just, yeah, yeah, stop there. And then, yeah, and then we say something to, to the effect of what Dustin just said, which is, you know, they will be adopted as individual plans.
By ordinance. By the ordinance.
By the ordinance adopting Imagine Urbana
Yeah.
as the new comprehensive plan or something.
You solved my problem of having my typical too long sentence.
Yeah.
Kevin.
And then.
Kevin, can you repeat that before?
Um, yeah, let's see. The following plans were adopted as amendments to the 2005 comprehensive plan. They will be, yeah, they will be adopted as individual plans by the ordinance that adopts Imagine Urbana.
And does the rest of that sentence stand or do we delete?
No, I don't think we need that.
We'll just do all that in the ordinance.
But, but we, by saying that in the plan, then with the.
Colon.
Plan Commission recommends to the council is the language in the plan and the language to be included in the ordinance.
Yes, yeah.
So when we, when we make a motion to adopt a plan, we should specify the language for the ordinance as well. We don't have to specify the whole ordinance. We just have to.
Right. Just, yeah, just like the paragraph that with the attorney did, just a new version of that.
Yeah, and then, and then Andrea, we can strike the bottom sentence completely. About subsequent versions, yeah, because we will deal with those as needed.
Now, the other question that we raised earlier too was what about future plans? Do we address that at all here?
No.
No, because the, I don't know if it's in the city's ordinance, but it's certainly in the, the state municipal code that that is, that is a possibility for the Plan Commission to do is to adopt other plans as amendments.
Review and adopt.
Yeah.
So we don't need to restate that.
Correct. The only other thing here is there was some question about whether the Climate Action Plan, which is not in this list, was adopted or not in.
As a, as an amendment?
Or.
I, I don't believe it was because I've gone through the, the list of amendments quite a few times now.
And we have those in the appendices as well, that list.
I think so, yeah.
But it was adopted.
In some fashion, yes. I, I think it was just recommended by the Sustainability Advisory Commission or Commissioner Committee, Commit, Commission, whatever, SAC Commission, yeah. I think they just recommended it to council.
Okay. In, in any case, it becomes, it might be worth having that in your back pocket, so to speak, because it becomes an example of what we're doing in case people question what we're doing. That, that exists.
Right.
So these are the ones that we had in the appendices that were officially amendments.
And those are all in the list? That paragraph?
Yeah, the latest version of, the latest version of each. I'm sorry, yeah, Complete Streets is not because.
It's a policy, I thought.
Yeah, it was, Complete Streets was essentially adding one goal and one objective to the plan and saying we're going to do complete streets stuff when we, when we build any, when we do any sort of street projects. It was very, very short and.
Okay, but now wait a minute. It's not included in the Imagine Urbana plan. We don't have a statement about complete streets in.
Correct. We have a statement about developing traffic calming policies.
Okay, so we are dropping in effect the Complete Streets Amendment? It's okay with me.
Yeah.
That's, that's in effect what we're doing.
Just need to be clear, yeah.
Kind of odd in my view, but I don't know whether we want to add a Complete Streets language to one of the, you know, like the statement you were just referring to.
I mean, I know, so we received a comment from Cynthia Hoyle, I remember that suggested. Well, I remember she liked that we talked about tra, uh, traffic calming policy. But she said the, it would be nice if we, you know, the most effective thing to do, she thought, would be to come up with a Complete Streets implementation plan because, you know, right now, we just, like I said, we have this very short policy that's there. But it doesn't really.
Very short policy that's there. The Complete Streets Amendment.
The amendment, yeah, it was, it's, it's super short.
One sentence.
Do, do we know what it says?
We looked at it, wanted to.
Yeah, I can, we can look that up.
I mean, can we, can we include it as a sentence with the current statements about streets?
We could, yeah.
Edit as a little move in there, in that section? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I, yeah, that's.
Somewhere in, in a paragraph statement that's about one of the big moves or whatever. I, I don't remember. But, but it, I mean, this is another reason that I don't like the idea of amending the comp plan with other total plans because then you lose track of actual amendments that you made to the comp plan. But anyway.
Yeah, and by the way, that link is dead in the website.
That makes sense, yeah.
It also seems impossible to find the Sustainability Advisory Commission on the website.
Okay.
There's more website feedback kind of questions.
Yeah.
Is that the, the city website?
Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, we're, we're running into a lot of that.
To a new website and today I was having trouble getting any archives of the Plan Commission agendas. And we had to, anyway, do a workaround to get to it so that the new website still has some.
Some issues.
Has some issues, yes. And we appreciate hearing them because unless somebody tells us that they're having trouble with an area, we don't know to correct it.
So I'm, I'm looking at this list, the Champagne County Hazard Mitigation Plan, is that included in the paragraph?
In the list, yeah, the 2021 version is.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that, that's another example of this problem. That's a county plan, not an Urbana plan. So our adopting it as an amendment to our comprehensive plan is a bit weird.
Which one was that?
We don't have complete control over its content.
The, the first one.
Hazard mitigation.
Hazard mitigation.
Anyway, it's just more reinforcement for doing what we're doing.
I think they, it was adopted by the city of Urbana.
As an amendment, though. That's a, what Lou's saying is it's a countywide plan. It seems really odd for us to.
Adopted it as their plan also, and then it became an amendment?
Yeah.
I can't validate that.
What I'm trying to say is that's an example where being independent of our comp plan is a good idea because we adopt it as a member of a group, which our comp plan is not. It is, we get to decide what's in our comp plan.
Yeah. I think going forward, maybe Plan Commission needs to be more assertive about being involved in these plan making processes for these other plans. And if we're not, then really thinking twice about adopting these as amendments.
Okay, so my reaction on this, I think at the moment is we know what we want to do and we're pretty close on language. And we can move on to another topic.
I agree, unless anyone has anything else to say on this one.
So I've saved this and we'll incorporate that. Thank you.
All right, next topic of discussion.
Go for it.
Okay. I mean, the only other thing that I have on my list is to revisit the Matrix, the Matrix. Red pill.
Okay, so do you want me to go and pull that up and?
Yeah, probably.
All right. Or, yeah, Andrea, if you want to just drive, drive through here, yeah.
Where would you like to look first?
Well, it's more kind of just wanting to know thoughts and how we want to, if we want to make any kind of suggestions around what I was bringing up earlier. I mean, it's kind of solved the, the, could you go to the fourplex? I mean, the fourplex is the one that bothers me the most, but are we, do we want to have images that are illustrative to the development community in particular about what we would like these things to look like? And if we do, I'm not sure that's the greatest example. Can you go down to the commercial uses next? The auto oriented ones. I think it's further down.
Yes.
Car oriented.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, these I just pulled from Google Street View.
Yeah, so. So my other question about this is we have these, we have two development types, car oriented business, small and large. The other commercial uses are mixed use, small and large, and then the houses.
Yeah.
So what, what jumps out to me as missing, if we're going to have pictures and options of car oriented, we should have non-car oriented. And I think, you know, we, we did all of this, well, not we, so the class that was working on this at one point, you know, made these site plans and at one point we were discussing, you know, the way to represent commercial development that was more pedestrian oriented or balanced between different users. And we don't really have good examples of that, but I think that's definitely a development type. a development type that we aspire to. And we've lost that as anything that we're trying to communicate in the matrix here.
Yeah.
What would be an example that comes to mind of that? A pedestrian-oriented.
Locally, we don't have it, but, I mean, we, we came up with a site plan and, you know, it, it just, it has a different orientation in terms of how the buildings relate to the street, how pedestrians move on and off the site. You know, the, the form and the site layout would be very different than what we see in these two car-oriented options, which are, you know, large, large and, large and largest, largish surface parking lots that are in front of the building. And there's a clear prioritization of cars as users of these. And I think there's, there's definitely, we could, we could find, I mean, even a picture of the pines, I think, is a better alternative if we wanted to go with something local. That's not, I wouldn't call it car-oriented. I would call it something that.
Neighborhood-oriented?
Maybe, yeah, or balances between the two.
Because most people, I mean, there's still, there's not a lot of houses that were within walking distance of the pines.
Yeah. I, I like your earlier version that it might be a good example of car-oriented because.
Yeah, let's see. Well, but then my, so, a better example of car-oriented. Well, I think, yeah, so that gets back to my.
Downtown is maybe more pedestrian-oriented.
Yeah, that gets back to my earlier question, which is, are these images just meant to reflect what we have or are they meant to be aspirational and communicate to the development community what we would like to be? And if we have examples of things that we're happy with, and I think the small apartment building and even the, the two apartment, the small, medium and large apartment buildings are good examples of apartment buildings. And I think that we should be proud of those, but I don't.
Kevin's challenge, I think, was in the case of the triplex, we didn't have any. And then if you want to show what we aspire to, it comes from a different community and isn't reflective of our.
Well, yeah, I think you can find things that would, would be a decent fit, yeah. I mean, we are not, yes, we are, we are special, but we are not in isolation in the kinds of things that we aspire to and our values.
So it's still okay if we don't have it to use an image we find from another community, but have it be more reflective of what, you know, kind of the, the feel of Urbana or?
Exactly, exactly. And the same for business that was, businesses that are car-oriented, but if we also wanted to include options that are not car-oriented. And maybe it's just a bad idea to, to say that we want car-oriented businesses to begin with. Maybe we want to just say, it's, it's business, right? I mean, we, again, we should be aspiring to things, development types, that do a good job of accommodating a variety of transportation mode, like how people would get there, right?
Would you call it, would you say pedestrian-oriented or?
No, well, I mean.
Or is it more non-car? I mean.
The Complete Streets version, I, I don't have a name for the development type off the top of my head, but it is, the Complete Streets is the version of the public right-of-way for that. And so we want to have a description of a business development type that does that. And that's, that's what we want. That's what we aspire to. We don't want, you know, we, we have, you know, the big box stores with huge parking lots, but we don't want that. That's not what we want the next commercial development to be.
You know, not that this is maybe a current good example, but Philo Road was really probably one of our best that's non-car-oriented. You know, we, it was in a neighborhood where people walked and the strips along there.
That's true, but when you look at the, the form of the development there, it is, for the most part, still set back from the street with large parking lot, even though it's right up against fairly dense residential uses. So poor site design, good mix of uses. But I think that's what we want to try and communicate, an alternative that pushes developers to do better, right? This is our chance to signal the development community that this is what we want.
So would you remove the car-oriented businesses because that's what we have now?
I would just, I would just call it business or something, because you have mixed use, two different types of mixed use, and then you're basically describing two.
Types of businesses.
Two types of businesses, small and large.
I, I concur because a lot of the places with large parking lots are accessible by bus, for example, and other pedestrians. So, yeah. I, I was thinking, you know, somehow indicating multiple access. But I think calling it business is not too bad either.
And the goal is still, we're talking about what we aspire to. I mean, that's, is, do we need to change the text up here to reflect that?
I think, I think we need to back off a step. I'm curious to hear what Andrew has to say. And I, I think there's more fundamental changes that may be needed here to make it serve its purposes.
My, my point was going to be kind of small. This commission uses walkable a lot as a term and car-oriented businesses are essentially non-walkable businesses, right? Maybe that's not an appropriate term to use here, but that's, I mean, that's a, that's a term that this commission uses a lot for what they want to do.
So on this particular thing, I think the Complete Streets analogy.
Lou, is your mic on or can you be closer to it? Sorry, I just want to make sure it gets captured.
The Complete Streets analogy, I think, is a great one. I've been trying to wordsmith with total failure, but if we could come up with a way, as Dustin has said, that the class worked hard on coming up with kinds of images that, that might convey this notion. They all, you know, there were also problems. And, and whatever, three weeks ago, we decided that we did not have the resources to, to do, to follow through on what we were attempting to do last fall. And, and that sort of gets me back to, we ended up with this matrix, which I think is very useful. But at the moment, it feels still like a deliberative mechanism rather than a adoptable recommendation mechanism. Because it, it doesn't actually convey the kind of thing that we want to achieve. And, and one example, as Kevin alluded to earlier, is I think some of this should be much more form-based in the development type. The, the apartment thing should not be by units. And, and. For form-based, the, some of the images work because they identify three to four stories or six stories that is a way of conveying the image of what we want. I, I think we've removed some of them. We, I, I don't think, for example, the apartment building five to 10 units, I don't think belongs in N1. But a, the fourplex example, that is a two-story building or a duplex example, maybe does belong in N1. And I think we're trying to convey that range of, of complexity. But, but expressing it by the number of units doesn't do anything because. It, it, well, for reasons Andrew has mentioned and otherwise, it's not about the number of units. It's about the form.
Yeah, why couldn't we go small, medium, large?
No.
I wrote, I wrote that down right here.
Form, I mean, mostly form. I mean, we can't, I think you have to pair this with the description.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, unless we're going to talk about, you know, open space ratio and.
What? Okay. But, but it's, in the images, I think what people, so, again, if we think of this as a deliberative document as opposed to an aspirational recommendation document, what residents and citizens care about is they see these images and they say, "Okay, are these buildings five stories high, four stories high or three stories high? Are they wider facing the street than a large single-family lot?" Those are the things they care about. From a developer looking at it, it may be completely different. And, and what Andrew has said, and the irony to me is I've written about this too, that the notion of development is to find a parcel of land that's zoned in a way that you're almost certain you can rezone. Because the value you gain in the value of that land by rezoning is a huge part of your development strategy. And it's, I mean, that's especially true in land expanding, but it's probably also, yeah, it's also true in almost every case. So we have to also think about, as Andrew said, what we're communicating to developers. And especially in today's world where more and more developers are actually out of state money. So in any case, I, I think we have to work significantly on these representations of development type. And I don't know how we do it.
Well, I agree that it, I think initially it served a deliberative, deliberate, deliberative purpose, but we are kind of moving beyond that deliberation now.
Right, exactly.
So we, I mean, I feel like we have what we know. I mean, you've, you just proposed one change about the appropriateness of one of them, but, I mean, we haven't heard a whole lot, I feel like, about these to suggest major overhauls. For me, I think it's, it comes back to the images and then tweaking the text. I mean, I, I like more of an emphasis on the form as something that's described in the text and then, to the best of our ability, finding images that communicate that form. And I think it just, it might not be as simple as, you know, finding something on the street view. I think we might need to put a little more. Yeah, it might be a little more effort than that.
I, I have a couple of thoughts about the images that get used. I, I do think it's a good idea, the way there are various kinds of images, because developers will look at something like this and try to gauge how open a community might be to, I'll just go back to the five to 12-unit apartment building, which is a very different aesthetic than everything else there, right? That's a good thing to me to have that there, but that's also a bad thing that that's the only example we have of that, right? I think that as a community in general, that is probably not the preferred aesthetic for that building, perhaps, in town? Correct. So as, as the only standalone example of that, that perhaps is not the best example. And I think that goes with, with other examples of buildings too. One of the things I think that has been, I'll back up a little bit. In, in, in my line of work, the same drawing drawn in CAD and the same drawing sketched is very different things to the client. The sketch thing is, is an amorphous, ambiguous variable thing and the CAD drawing is not, right? So perhaps the way to do this is to get them line-sketched of what we want, right? Instead of a, instead of a hard example, it's a more of an ambiguous example of what we want.
Yeah, I think that's what we all wanted, but then at some point, we decided that there weren't the resources for that. So we had to kind of find the best, the best alternative. Something, I mean, what Andrew said is something that I've been thinking about for a while, which is, why can't we have multiple images for these? And I was kind of, thought we were constrained by the page and the encode format. But, I mean, if this were a report, we could have, we could flip this and have a landscape orientation that went across two pages. And I don't know if that's something that we can still do with encode, but if we could do that, then we could have, yeah, I mean, we chose, or whoever chose this, this image, this is, this image of the apartment complex on Green Street is something that's been circulating as an example of things for a while. But there are lots of other examples of similar apartment buildings with a similar form and a similar buildable envelope, I suppose, or something like that, that would be good to show. And I think that's probably the case for most of these. So I don't know. I mean, is that a possibility technically? I mean, I don't think you can do it with this because you'd crowd the columns for the place type too much, but.
And some, some of the, you know, the images, like here, look at this one. We have, it fits these place types but doesn't fit these. So, you know, you can, I don't know if we could play around with, okay, you'd eliminate these, the ones that fall outside of it or, I don't know.
I think that the.
To give you more room, I'm just thinking.
The right side of the matrix works well as a way to keep things consistent.
Right.
But I think it's figuring out how to stretch what's on the left side.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can look for ways to, to do this. I mean, it's, it could just be, it could just be a stack of, you know, a few images. There could be three images of single houses right there, you know? And we're, we're not constrained by page length because it's the internet and it's infinite scrolling. So, you know, I could just get some other images and pop them in there and just, so that there would be a few images for each of these.
Kevin, would it allow, like if you did have three images here, is there a way to be able to click on it and make it bigger like we do with the maps?
Yeah, I mean, it would just take a little bit more time to do that, but it's.
Because if the images appear small, here we might be able to enlarge them.
So I kind of uploaded these images as kind of small images because that was before I knew how to get bigger images in there. But, yeah, I think, I think that would be doable.
May I suggest two possibilities in the interest of moving this to a point that we can actually act on it? I'm going off of Andrew, Mr. Fell's distinction between a, a sketch and a representation. Could these images be sketchified?
Yes.
That is, you know, basically adopted into just something that would then become an outline, a pretty outline, black and white kind of outline. So that they, so that we don't, so that we're not going to them so much for information. We're really only, we're being pointed more directly to the, the verbal, the text description of these properties. If, if that, if something like that wouldn't be satisfactory, then I'm to the question of, are we serving ourselves well by going to the matrix as opposed to simply having? of, are we serving ourselves well by going to the matrix as opposed to simply having text description of the place type to go with the map? I favor the first option, keep them and sketchify them.
AI can help with that.
I think that, that's one of the major issues, is we don't have the resources, because we don't have the staff that we used to have, that can do a lot of work. So if, if people in the commission are able and willing to contribute to this effort, that could help. I mean, that would give me more optimism that there was something that could get done, but. At a different level, but to stay on the same question, I think there's, so if we change to form and not units, then I think that solves some problems of what's allowed or proposed, this is not allowed, this is sort of proposed as indicators. We've, we've taken the nine, the six-story apartment is out of N2, and it should be out of neighborhood corridor, I can't remember now what it's.
Can you scroll down, Andrea, to the big apartment?
Yeah, so it's only in downtown and university.
And perhaps in commercial, that's discussion point, but.
Yeah, and I guess, I think it shouldn't be, but I'm not going to worry about it too much. I don't think home-based businesses should be in commercial downtown or university neighborhood, and when I say that, it's partly, again, gets back to this image question, because the image is home-based business in a little house, which almost certainly doesn't belong in those zones. Does that mean that somebody who lives in an apartment can't sell insurance?
No, no, I mean, we allow, yeah, yeah, and we allow home-based businesses everywhere.
Yeah, I understand, but, but I'm getting at is this gets back to the image problem. What are we communicating by using these images? And getting rid of them entirely may be another option. Or, or maybe home-based business doesn't have to be a development type, because it's not actually a development type, we've just suggested, we allow it anywhere in any kind of building. So I would just take it out. I would just say it's not a development type.
Yeah, I mean, that, that makes sense, and just, I'd say, the reason that I included it was, because I like thinking of sort of this continuum of intensity of, I guess, uses was what I was originally kind of starting with, but uses, development, whatever, because the least intense business you can have is somebody sitting on their computer and consulting for somebody, you know, overseas or whatever.
But I think the development type is covered by the residential type.
It is, yeah.
Right, and this gets back to whether we're talking about unit configuration, form, land use, and we've got them sort of badly confounded. I, I think taking home-based business out of the list is the.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Best way to solve that problem. And then, mixed-use, large, in neighborhood center or corridor neighborhood, and again, what I'm focusing on is the images and what they convey to me, I don't think they belong in neighborhood center or corridor neighborhood.
For the.
Mixed-use, large.
Yeah, mixed-use, large is not in neighborhood center, but yes, it is currently in the corridor neighborhood.
Yeah, elsewhere, we said three to four stories.
Yeah, so you could see, I mean, that's possible, but the odds, the odds of that happening, as we've seen over the past 20 or more years, the odds of doing sort of a large mixed-use thing anywhere is pretty, pretty minimal. I mean, I used gather there, but gather is mostly residential by, you know.
No, but I think.
By a good amount, so.
We got to concentrate on the form, bring it back to form, I think the form doesn't match, doesn't make sense for that.
I mean, we specifically created corridor neighborhood to avoid that.
Yeah, so let's take it out.
So, I mean, yeah, the simple solution is to delete the green under corridor neighborhood for that.
Yeah.
And I think it's, and there already is deleted under neighborhood center, okay. And another, you've got, this is nitty-gritty, but you've got a scrolling header, so it stays there, but if there's, and this may again be limitations of encode, if we could make that header into vertical fuller names of what those things are, because even though I know, and I've been looking at this for two weeks now, I keep getting confused between NC and CN and UN, and if, if we could, I don't know that you can do it in encode, but the way I would do it, if I were doing it in Word, is make them vertical, because there's no, since that, it stays there and you scroll it.
Yeah.
You know, you're not, you could use two inches for that header and it'd be fine.
So Kevin, is another alternative, can we make it a definition that you hover and then it describes it?
Yeah, I think, I think we could, but that's what I was thinking too.
Less than 75 years old.
Well, would it, the way it works in the other text in the document is that, you know, you just, it's highlighted and it, you can just run your mouse over it and it shows you the definition.
Right, but what I'm saying is, looking at it all the time, it's painful, and having to go up and hover over each one and figure out what each one was, you know, that's, that's what I'm trying to avoid. My mind can figure it out faster than I can hover over it.
I'll, I'll see what I can do.
Okay, I mean, that, that's just formatting. Now, I don't know, the other thing is the Venn diagram, we may need to go back to, but that's the only other thing I've gotten, but I'm not sure we're through with this yet.
Any, any other things, questions for the matrix?
Not for me, but does anyone else have any comments or discussion on the matrix portion?
Only this question, have we, do you think in the course of this discussion, we have come up with a direct, precise, explicit direction on what to do with this matrix, such that we can trust the staff to move forward with that?
Right, you're asking if we were to make a recommendation for approval, contingent on these comments being addressed?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we've, we've communicated some good direction, do you feel like you kind of know what we're looking for?
Yeah, I know what, I, I kind of know what you're looking for, I feel like there's multiple ways in my head that I would design what, you know, there, there's multiple approaches I can take, but I'm pretty confident in my ability to then pick a direction and go with the one that I think encapsulates what you're, what you're telling me tonight, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chen Chi has been sitting here making some good sketch drawings from existing drawings, so.
On her phone.
You might do some too.
And so are we okay with the text up here? We don't need to change anything based on our conversation?
But that's funny.
So.
Yeah.
Like what the purpose of that matrix is?
Yeah, we should. Play that.
You know what you want, just ask it to, you can't ask.
Yeah, cool.
Did you have something else?
I'm not sure where other people are going.
We need to talk about the purpose statement for this, I think.
For the matrix?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because.
So back to Bill's comment, before we do that, if we're going to delegate this to staff, not contingent on seeing it again, I think we have to be much more specific than we've been so far about what it includes. So this would be an example.
I think we're, we're moving in that direction, so we should, I think, try and be as specific as possible so that we can try and do that, but we can come back to that, but let's tackle this. So this describes the purpose of the table as being mostly about future updates to the zoning ordinance, and do we need to broaden that out, I guess is the question? And what, what should we? I think it's mainly the first sentence.
Yeah, I'm concerned about its apparent close linking to a zoning ordinance, as if this was the draft of the zoning categories, and I think we have to avoid that somehow.
Me too.
What if we just say that it's meant to visualize the development types, or?
Well, and neighborhood types. Well, now, wait a minute, we've got a name for, this is a matrix, so we got a name for the things across the top, and we've got a name for the things going down the side. So the things going down the side are development types, what are the things going across the top?
Place types.
Place types, okay.
Why don't we just describe what it's doing? Like, this, this table provides visual examples of development types that may be appropriate in, that, and then, and shows which place types they're good fit for, something like that, that's not the, that's not a, don't cop, don't, quote me on that.
Well, if we say, if we say that may be appropriate for, you know, in each place type.
Yeah, so we're not getting into the purpose of, we're not, it's not about telling developers how to game the system, it's not about how we're going to change the zoning ordinance, it's just describing what this is showing.
Yeah, I mean, but I, you know, part, part of me really wants us to be explicit and say, you know, our big move number two is to rewrite the zoning ordinance, or is that a big idea to you, whatever it is.
Big move.
It's a big thing.
Yeah.
And, you know, because I want to tackle that pretty shortly after we adopt this thing, so that we don't run into this issue, or 20 years down the road, we say, you know, what, what happened, and we assess things, and we say, oh, we didn't update the zoning ordinance to match the plan like we said we would.
Right, but then we have something in the, the plan that we may still have for many years after this update, that seems to have only been there to date the zoning ordinance. I, yeah, I get, maybe it's. Maybe it's something about the future and, and the way that we would have talked about future land use, as a future land use map, but.
As I see it, it's a matrix that describes the fitness of different development types for the place types. It may be used in the, in future development of zoning ordinances.
Yeah.
It may be used for that purpose.
Somewhere there is language that indicates that a neighborhood type might be, I can't remember, might be made up of multiple zoning categories.
Yeah.
And I, I keep losing that language and be surprised when I see it somewhere, maybe we could repeat that language at the beginning of this, because I think that would, what I think we want to be careful about is implying that this is a draft zoning table.
What if we say something about how, maybe it's not that we need to describe this in the matrix, we need to describe this in the, where the development types are first introduced, or where the place types are first introduced, and say that this includes a matrix that shows how development types can vary by place type, but something about how, this is how areas should look and feel in the future, or something like that. Ms. McFarlane?
I just have a question regarding the paragraph that starts with, for example, while the King Park historic area, what, what area does that really encompass, because it's really not another area that's large neighborhood type with King Park? What, what area is that?
Just sort of like the neighborhoods around King Park, around the park itself.
Okay, because it says, have assigned different zoning districts.
Deb, is your mic on?
Thought it was, sorry. Yeah, it, to me, it's like they're breaking it up, but I don't know, because that's Ellis Drive, King Park.
Yeah.
It's, it's different than Ellis Drive subdivision. Totally different.
Yeah.
I'm just, what are thoughts on that? I just want to know what people are really thinking that that can be, as they're using it as an example, because I'm more of a visual person, I'm just trying to figure out what it's going to look like.
Yeah, I was just trying to pick two areas that weren't sort of next to each other and said, you know, these two have, have the neighborhood one place type, and just, you know, they could look different when we, when we assign different zoning districts there. But yeah, I mean, I could have picked many, from many other different sort of areas of the city too.
Actually, that may be the paragraph I was thinking about, but it doesn't read, I think it's problematic for multiple reasons. It sort of ambiguously can be read as a comparison between two neighborhoods and implying that they would be treated differently, which is something we're pretty good at around here.
Yeah, I mean, what if, what if we just said something like, you know, if we just said, for example, while many areas, because many areas do share the neighborhood one place type, I think that's probably, that might be a.
I, I think we should get rid of the paragraph. Is there, is this the paragraph I was thinking of, or is there another paragraph somewhere which I think says that, or I'm pretty sure I've read to mean that within a neighborhood type, there may be multiple zoning categories.
Yeah.
But that's actually not what this paragraph says. But, that's actually not what this paragraph says. And this paragraph, I think, is actually quite problematic. So, I'm, 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 I remember the last time I brought up that I was surprised to come across that paragraph that I'm talking about, and thought it was new, but you pointed out that it wasn't new. It's even the old one, but I can't remember where that is.
And Mr. Hopkins, did it happen to have to do with place types? Or was it more about the zoning ordinance that you're referring to?
I'm realizing another problem with the organization of this thing, but. So, where, so the place types matrix is actually like an appendix. It's at the end after everything else.
It's in the maps.
But, place types are somewhere else.
It's, it's in the maps, place types, and then the map itself. I can show you here.
Here's the matrix. Oh, then comes the map.
The place types are here, if you look at the, look at the screen.
Yeah, okay, so my, my pages have gotten flipped.
So, I have on the screen the place types, and then the map follows that, and then the matrix in the table of contents here on the left.
So.
While, while I was thinking, so I get what you're saying about wanting to get it out there that the zoning ordinance is going to be updated. But, I think that's kind of the discussion we had about that first paragraph that describes the purpose of the comprehensive plan, is that the zoning ordinance is based on the comprehensive plan. So, I don't know that we need to explicitly say that again. I think it was useful from a deliberative standpoint in the process, but I think now that purpose changes for what that thing is, right? Once this gets adopted, we're not trying to convince people about the appropriateness. It's, it's the plan.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's, that's how I'm thinking about it.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Hopkins, is that paragraph what I have highlighted here? Is that the one you're looking for?
Well, you already have the look and feel in the future in there.
Yeah.
That from somewhere else.
Yeah.
I was thinking about that from somewhere else.
So, when you say, say that the place type matrix, the purposes of it changed, do you mean that we no longer need that in the plan? Because we have coming towards the finishing line of the plan, so that part does, is no longer needed?
No, not that it, it's, it's had multiple purposes. So, I think it's always been about policy guidance, as the plan is in general. But, it served a purpose to generate conversation and deliberation with the public in the plan-making process.
And now, at this stage, we're ready to adapt the plan, what's the purpose of? Do we still see a purpose of keeping this matrix in the plan?
Sure. Policy guidance, but also sends signals to the development community, communicates information to the development community.
This may be the paragraph I was thinking, but it still doesn't say what I thought is said someplace explicitly. And that is that a place type could consist of multiple zoning categories.
Districts, yeah.
So, that people get clear that where we have defined place types, which is what the map is of, is explicitly not a draft zoning map because place types are made up of multiple zoning categories. And I, I could have sworn that I came across that last time, and you told me it wasn't new, but I can't come across it again. And, as Dustin has pointed out, my copy is now no longer in order, so it doesn't much help for me to look.
Well, I'll, I'll look for it, and if, you know, if I find it, I'll let you know where it's at, or if for some reason it doesn't exist, and it's in both of our minds that it does, I'll make sure that it gets in the appropriate place.
So, I think it should exist in this paragraph that Andrea is showing us. It should be a sentence there, because this comes close. And I think it should also be a sentence at the beginning of the, of the matrix, in the intro to the matrix. And, and, you know, without being precise about words, basically what it needs to say is that place types might, are likely to be made up of multiple zoning categories.
Yeah, it would make sense to slot it in here, maybe at the end of the first paragraph, or maybe even in the second paragraph, since the second one-sentence paragraph is making an important note.
And did I hear you'd also like to put it on the matrix section also?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So, both, both places, okay.
Basically, that sentence. And, and now that I've read what Alexandra has pointed out, that sentence should be deleted. If you, if you want, because I think part of what it was trying to say is the, this other point I'm making now, that place types do not determine zoning categories, but comparing two neighborhoods and suggesting that they would get different zoning, even though that the same place type is not acceptable, I guess. I mean, it might, in fact, occur for good reasons, but you don't want to make that comparison. What you want to say is that place types can be made up of multiple zoning types.
Okay, we can make that addition.
Yeah.
I have, I have two procedural items before we move to a motion on this. One is, at, at two meetings ago, we formally continued the public discussion, and seems we, we ended the public discussion today without a declaration whether it was continued or closed. A second item is, I've made a list of seven items that, where we discussed changes to the current, the current text. And I think if we're going to proceed today, we need to make this as explicit as possible and agree on such a list.
Okay, to the first point, when we moved into discussion, I did say that the public hearing portion of the, public hearing portion, public input portion of the hearing was closed.
Closed, very good, thank you.
We could correct that.
Sure. But, we can also continue this meeting without reopening public input, if that's something we want to do. Sorry, and what was the, the second point was that you've got a list of proposed changes?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I've come up with seven items where we have directed staff to make changes in the current text.
Okay.
The one thing I have said I wanted to come back to was the Venn diagram. But, I think the Venn diagram is okay, because the only thing included within the imagined Urbana area is small area plans.
Yeah, that's correct.
It's, maybe we should say future small area plans?
We do. That was in my notes from last time, so that's, that's now in there.
It, it does say, because I'm looking now at an old one.
Yeah.
So, that's okay, because the small area plans that we've said should be adopted separately are not future ones. Okay, that, that was the one undone, or what I thought was undone, but it's fine.
There it is.
Yeah, okay.
I have a small thing I want to talk about. So, when we are talking about the place type matrix, so I'm a data scientist, I think about data all the time. Matrix can be represented in this format, literally as a matrix, but there are other data structure that can represent a matrix that might be, I'm not sure if it's going to be easier, but I'm going to sure that. We can have a list of pictures.
Can, can you get close to the mic? I know that's hard, holding the paper.
We can have a list of pictures as much as we want, and then, right next to the picture, we can indicate neighborhood one, neighborhood two, and if neighborhood one is the green, we highlight neighborhood one as green. If it's not appropriate, we just don't mention it. So, as a way to get more information when you're looking at a single family, what you're expecting it to be, and without the crowded information that, since that doesn't apply. And also, you can see directly from the picture to neighborhood one, neighborhood two, city center. So, just a different way to visualize this matrix, because this is relatively speaking a small matrix. When you get to a much bigger one, this data format is not compact enough to show all the information. This is very sparse.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, that, I like that notion, because, I mean, right now, we've got these giant vertical cells that are conveying one, you know, conveying one of three things. It's a yes, it's a maybe, and it's a no, and it's taking up a lot of space on the page to convey that message. So, are you suggesting that so like next to any of these? So, next to the duplex, just having a list of all, whatever, 14 place types, just in a row, and then we just highlight the ones?
No, just a list of the four highlighted green. And then, for duplex, you would have eight, two would be green, six would be yellow.
Oh, yeah, so you just have a list of what, of where it would be appropriate?
We need a whiteboard in here for our meetings, I think.
Yeah.
And, and, and that means you delete the labels at the top.
The white space.
You don't have elements.
Yeah, yeah.
I like that.
Yeah, nice suggestion.
More efficient from a computing point of view, it's a much more.
Lou, is your mic on?
On, it wasn't on before. She was saying.
Yeah.
It, and, and part of it, becoming much more efficient allows more photographs. I, I think this is what Genshi's trying to explain, that we, we gain space for photographs by saving space. So, it's interesting, I haven't thought of this as a matrix compression, other than as a data structure. I haven't thought of it as a compression on a piece of paper.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah. Cool. Thanks.
Thank you for the format suggestion.
All right, is there anything else that we need to discuss?
So, I do want to volunteer myself. If you guys want to go down the route of either actual pictures, but if you are going to go down the route of making sketches of it, as long as you give me the actual picture, I can make it into a, tell me the style you want, I can make it into the sketch style for you.
Okay, thank you.
Amazing.
So, let me understand what you're actually doing, though. You, you are sketchifying the image that's there.
So, I took a picture from the computer screen of the gather. I say, well, create a sketch for me. I say, I'm going to add a cafe in the first floor. I say, give me some color, so I land up on this one. But, if there's some other style you want to go, you can just ask it to.
Yeah, so, I, the, the thing I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about is that the, I mean, I think it's a great idea, and it appears that you've got the capabilities to do it fairly quickly.
Yeah.
But, then, we, we won't actually know what's there unless we see these.
I can send it to Kevin, can we send it to everyone?
Well, anyway.
Yeah, but we either have to vote tonight, or we continue it to another meeting. So, I mean, there's no intermediate approval in midweek or something like that.
Wait, no, I.
Right.
I understand, that's, that's, I'm trying to get to exactly that binary distinction that we're up against.
Yeah.
But, I thought if Angela, if you can pull up the schedule again, I think we, if we continue, we will still be able to meet the 21st.
Yeah, if we were to meet next week at a special meeting, we could, we could see, you know, we could have updated results and still make it to the 21st.
Yes, that's true.
But, we won't have Lou, and we might not have others.
Okay.
Do we have any idea whether we have a quorum?
We haven't, I, I don't think we've asked about that yet.
Yeah.
I, I will be here next week, not the following.
Oh, okay.
Can we do just a straw poll, just a?
Iowa can be here next week.
Okay, there's.
So, you got a quorum.
There's five.
I mean, you, you may.
Yeah, we could.
You may still not want to do that, but that's a piece of data that's relevant.
Lou, would you, would, would you be available to just be in individual contact with me and Andrea if need be? Or are you going to be totally off? Or, I guess we can talk about that.
I could even show up remotely, but not.
Yeah.
Not consistent with our bylaws, because I'm not.
Uh, consistent with our bylaws if we have quorum.
Oh, if you have a quorum, I can be away for no good reason.
Correct, well, not for no good reason, sorry, it's got to be.
I, I thought it was medical or business.
There's like, yeah, there, yeah.
Anyway, I mean, I don't need to be here.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think that all depends on if we feel we need to have another look at this or not as well.
I think I'd be more comfortable having the changes made and voting on them with the changes in hand, rather than, well, the, the changes are small. Strike the sentence in legal framework, update the double sevens, colors on the place type mat, complete streets, addition, revise amendment discussion, images, and then several discussions regarding the, the matrix, and then also the Venn diagram. I would, I would be more comfortable voting later, but there's the risk of no quorum.
It looks like you got a quorum.
There would be a quorum.
There would be a quorum.
Well, I won't show up, but everybody else said they would, so you'll have a quorum.
And, and we don't know about Ms. Sims.
You can.
Or Will.
Yeah, and Will.
If you actually post, and I can actually get at them.
Yeah.
The changes, I can look at them and react to you before the meeting. But, again, it, it needs to happen so that I get them before the meeting to look at. I mean, and that only matters if somebody else wants my opinion, because I won't be here, and I.
And, nor will I, but we'll, I'll work with Kevin, we'll get things done before I, I leave town. leave town.
But, I mean, that's, two of us have spoken, I don't know about the rest, people may want to act.
No, I mean, I'm fine with whatever everyone thinks. I will be here regardless. I'm just trying to, to work with staff to keep us on the schedule that you've been trying to get to. Okay, so are we ready to make a motion then? So we can, the motion can be to continue, the motion can be to recommend, whatever, but we need to have a motion, I think, at this point, since we kind of seem like we've wrapped up our discussion.
I had, I had one other topic. We passed around some comments since the last meeting, public feedback. I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to address there.
You talking about this, the communications you're talking about?
It's one that has the yellow on it, yeah. Those were, I didn't know if there were any comments that you saw there that you'd like to go on record as addressing.
I found the comments helpful, but I feel like they have been addressed. The purpose, we made the purpose, we made, we made it very clear what the purpose of the comprehensive plan is, and that is to, to provide guidance for future land use decisions in a way that incorporates the cultural, includes moral, I think now, life of the city. And I feel like that is sufficient and needn't be elaborated to address the other issues like jobs and schools that have arisen in the course of this discussion. It's not that we're ignoring them.
Yeah, I really like that line of thought. We are talking about increasing the business activity, the tax base, all of those will be funneled into and enhancing the quality of life, including schools.
All right, so does someone want to make a motion then, to continue the meeting, it sounds like?
I so move that we continue the meeting. I don't have the plan number in front of me.
Sorry, can we clarify if we're going to, or just, is there any discussion about reopening public input?
I'm comfortable keeping it closed as...
Well, why don't we make, I mean, we can make a motion and then discuss the motion?
Yeah, sorry, and I realized when I asked that, that I probably should have waited for the motion and not jumped in, so sorry about that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Rose. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but your motion is to continue Plan Case Number 2502 CP 25 to the April 10th, to a special meeting of the Plan Commission that will be held on April 10th. Is that the date, the date is correct?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Fell. Is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Hopkins?
Ironically, I'm not going to be here, but holding a public meeting without allowing public input, if somebody does show up, I'm glad I'm not going to be sitting up here.
Well, that was going to be my next comment, is if we have a public meeting, we should allow the public to speak if they're here to do so.
So do we need to amend that motion then, or how should we handle that?
Yeah, I think the clean way would be for someone to offer an amendment.
And then we'll vote on the amendment first, and then on the original? Or do we need to separate those out, or?
I think you just vote on the amendment first, and then, and then you can vote on the original.
Okay. So does someone want to make an amendment to that motion to reopen the public input portion of the hearing?
I will move that we reopen the public portion of Plan Case Number 2502-CP-25 at the next meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion, an amendment, a motion to amend the motion by Mr. Fell. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Hopkins. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, so we'll first vote on the amendment. Can I have a roll call, please? Yes.
Mr. Andreessen? Mr. Fell? Mr. Hopkins? Yes. Ms. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, so that amendment, the amendment motion passes.
And that was unanimously?
Unanimously, yes. And now we need to, I guess we're still in discussion on the original motion. Is there anything else, any other discussion on that motion, or are we ready to vote on that? And that motion is the continuation of the meeting. All right, can we have a roll call for that motion?
Mr. Alred?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen? Mr. Fell?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Sims? And Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion also passes unanimously. So just to review, Plan Case Number 2502 CP 25 will be continued to the special meeting of the Plan Commission on April 10th. At that meeting, we will reopen the public input portion of the hearing, as well as get updates from staff on changes, and discuss the case, and possibly vote again. New business, we have no new business. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Plan Commission for five minutes uninterrupted on a topic of your choice? If so, please come forward and sign in. Staff report.
I have no staff report.
No staff report. No study session, in which case we are adjourned at 9:43.